Just want to start off by making a blanket statement. That I hope that we can all be respectful of each other. I know that, you know, there's a discourse in the past between the school board that we've invited here tonight.
Some issues the last time we met, want to make sure that we're as respectful as we can be while still being as demanding on both sides to make sure that we're getting the best out of each group. And that we're getting all the answers and all the, you know, sharing all the information that we possibly can. But I just want to make sure that everyone being as serious and respectful on each group. That we can be and that we will not tolerate disrespect from either side or anybody here. So that being said. The fact is somebody had mentioned in one meeting, God, it feels like forever ago now, but we're going to have the school, uh, the school board, uh, well, the school board here. I'm sorry, appreciate everyone coming, um, to just discuss kind of where the town is. Um, you know, what was the broken school board is. Seeing as though, um, and, and, you know, directions the school is going, I know that, um. Uh, a number of us were just at a, uh, Waukesha District meeting with the superintendent and each of the five towns. That's just last week, just last week, um, that a number of us attended, uh, one for each four basically, uh, through Austin and, um.
Could you give us a little heads up on what this stuff will say?
Yeah, um, it was very, very, very general. Um, I will say there was almost no detailed conversation. Um, it was very much the towns basically stating that they didn't have money to pay for increases for the school. Uh, and feel free for those who are there to, um, to chime in and correct if I say anything that's out of line or if you have anything to add on. But, um. You know, it was basically a conversation about the school wanting to make improvements on things that they, uh, feel as though. Had become some part, some part in the previous administration. Um, things that they thought had become problems, they think as though they've made good steps to fix as far as the school, the education administration, um, waste. Uh, they said that they've made a lot of improvements on different hiring positions that they thought would help the education of the, especially elementary, I believe. And the changes that they made were, uh, staying within the same budget. So in other words, they reallocated resources that they had that they thought was waste, not waste, but unnecessary into places where they thought it would be more helpful. So they were, um, basically getting the point across that they think that they're making improvements to the education while staying within the budget that they had initially put out. They. It definitely stated that they're going to be looking for, you know, in years to come, um, improvements, and they'd like to work with the towns to do so. And, um, you know, be all on the same page as to how we want to move forward. There's a lot of conversation around making sure that the school is retaining its students as opposed to a lot of those students. That it seems like a larger portion of them have been going to other options, out of school districts, um, technical schools, private schools, et cetera. Um, and that a lot of the concern is around how do we, um, retain those students? Which is a part of why theoretically we might be in the whole harmless, uh, portion we are is because some of those students are going outside of, um, the district, right? So if that hadn't happened, maybe we wouldn't be in that position, but, um, it is what it is. So there's a lot, been a lot of, um, they hired a company to look at the population and the future populations. To look at what the future might look like for the school population and where those students might be going. There was not enough data at this time to kind of give too much information on that unless somebody else heard something else.
That was phase one of the study was paid with grant money and they just got approved for the second half of the grant for phase two, ninety thousand dollars.
And that's the study with the two.
It's a population.
Population growth.
You know, the, the whole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, um, so actually phase one included population growth, they contacted all, uh, five communities planners, uh, town clubs offices. I believe phase two was more the efficiency and utilization, so, um, I think looking at district policies. And ways for improvement there, so we actually already have that and that was shared with, um, both boards, the base one population growth study. Um, when it was completed sometime early this year. And then kind of this is the next step, so where do we go from here and improve at the town and school.
So it was talked about a little bit, um. There was definitely consensus from the towns on. It was, it was very, felt very united as far as what the towns were expecting out of the school. Uh, all the towns kind of seemed to be in the same. Position as far as financially and then also like, you know, what to expect. The, the, there was a lot of rhetoric around having a five to 10 year plan for the school to say, where do you see yourself in five to 10 years? And what it, what is it going to take to get there? Um, that was a big portion of the conversation and there was no answers that came out of that frankly, but, um, I think that there wasn't, I didn't expect any answers. I think the expectation was that they'll prepare something to be displayed about where they expect to be. And then once they have that in place, you can say, okay, here's what it's going to cost and here's what the towns are going to have to fund points. Uh, which I think is where we, where we need to be, where we expect to be and, um, will be required. They did a, uh, uh, early, uh, budget proposal, but it was very like, here's the memo of what we're going to expect. Um, it was a four point five five percent increase, um, but that is not what they're going to be asking for, it's going to be higher. They, they basically flat out said that, um, doesn't mean it, it will be, but I'm, I'm sure it will. Um, so we need to prepare ourselves for that higher number, whatever that might be, um. And we don't know what it is, um.
I've heard rumors, but there's no sense in saying it, they didn't have any top number they're thinking.
No, so they, they provided, I think, a very, very high level estimate of what a level services budget would be. Um, but I think after discussion, of course, the discussion was just only in the book in the room. Um, and it's still very early in the budget development process for the school district. The level services budget came from, I think a lot of discussions that, um, the town administrators have had with district administration is. We're already in our budget development process and we'd like to have some sort of figures. But also it was very clear that while there was a level service budget presentation, there was also a list of needs and shortfalls that the district needs that they have. And. The resources that would be needed to address those, um, I suspect will come in the form of like requests to the next. But of course, I don't want to speak for the school committee, business and finance committee, or the district administration, what their plan is looking forward either. So that was just very high level of just last Thursday.
Yeah, I mean, he definitely said that he was going to be asking for more, so it was, by no means, you're not speaking for anyone. He said that he would be asking for more than four point, four point five five that was level six.
Sorry, I mean, there was some conversation also that if communities are looking towards overrides Holden specifically, but other communities as well, it would. It seemed like there was feedback in the room that it would be a big corrective override and what that would look like with the commitments from. The, the school side, knowing that the school is, the schools are about sixty percent of all of our budgets now, even Holden's is about sixty percent, um, from what Anthony.
Could you give a copy of the presentation that you missed out?
There was a presentation.
Uh, well, Julie Kelly did a presentation.
That's her presentation that she did for us last year.
We had Tracy Novak last year, this was Julie Kelly, but I don't, we didn't get an email to us, I'm not sure if.
It was an updated version of the, the only presentation, the only official presentation that happened was the same one that we saw with the number of.
Talking about the one where they said this is a level service budget and this is where it's at, we can't get popular.
Of, of course, um, since we have them in the public records, we can certainly, um, however, you're, you're not going to get a lot of detail, Karen. Um, just because there is no line of detail.
I get it, but it, it's just, you know, same things that you guys saw, it'd be nice for the rest of the board to see it as well.
How helpful will that be for one, your discussion tonight or e- even any future discussions? Because I think it's very clear that those won't be the final ones. So I, I, I really don't know. I don't know where we're going to get from there, other than maybe attending the school committee meetings and providing feedback during their budget and finance discussions.
Again, so I'm just looking at is if you guys as chairs and town administrators thought, why couldn't you share it with the select board members and the finance committee members? We might not get much out of it, but at least we're seeing the same things that you guys have seen.
How did you get them all?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, not again, sharing, um.
At what point in Austin do we have to start? Have you calculated out where we have to go with an override if they go, do we have to, if they're four point five five, do we need an override?
Well. You're a deficit.
So when you know, right?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Are we still on the recap of the meeting last week?
Yes.
I have a question on that before we get into other stuff. So at the end of the, well, I don't know if you have anything else to add, but I'm, my question is that towards the end or at. Was there a consensus of the towns, usually those meetings, they vote, they, but they, the town, the five towns vote and say, here's what we really want to see for our number. Is that an agreement that they made?
No, there was no, there was no order, no consensus. It was very, very high level conversation, there was no, uh, expectation set or anything like that. It was just a, uh, here's where we think things are going down, I think the three year path, there wasn't even a this year path conversation really. I mean, we did talk about that, but it was, I don't think it was meant to be that and. It wasn't the focus. So we were talking about the budget, but, um, I think that we, again, we, we wanted to make the best use of the school board's time that we invited here. So I think let's converse with them, have the conversation with them if we want to stay after, um, and after that conversation, we can talk about the budget and all that stuff as well. But I suppose let's, um. More people here. Ted is not here. I asked for the school board to come and, and kind of just so we can converse about, um, what's happening around and make sure that we're all. On the same page as far as what we know and what we, um, expect to happen and things like that. Um, obviously, you know, we may have disagreed, disagreements, um, on what we should do, but that doesn't matter. That doesn't change the fact that we want everyone to be on the same page as far as what we know and what's going to happen as far as, um, the town's finances, right? So I, I, uh, if anyone wants to ask specific questions to the school board while they're here, I think that's probably the best bet. I think that I, I'd love to kind of first start off by just asking maybe the school board, if you guys want to give your opinions, maybe you can't talk for the board itself, right? But if you want to give your opinions on, um, where you kind of see the, uh, the. District or the school district going in the next couple of years, um, at least financially speaking, like what you think some of the concerns might be on their side. Anything you can kind of give us insights into as far as your insights, um, or concerns that you have, especially financially for this conversation. Uh, maybe start off by just a quick jab into that and then hopefully some, there'll be some questions and we can kind of get into a little bit. Whoever.
Yeah, I'm happy to share my, my individual opinion, um, observations, I'm not able to avoid. So here are the four point five five percent number, um, I haven't seen the, the, um, presentation and I don't see details on it. But it's my understanding that's where the district can maintain level services, not level funded, but level services. And to me, that number of just as a starting point was a concern for the town of Rutland and from other towns. Like they have the opportunity to watch the whole in Board of Selecting meeting, I believe from this past Monday. And there were concerns on that four and a half percent number of predicted there. So when I look at long-term or, or years ahead, it's hard to look at a number below that because that, that's level services. So I'll kind of just say that off the bat. So if we're starting looking at that, that's a, that's a point that we're talking override. Well, that's something that people should know and be able to deliberate that. Well, in advance of when you all get a budget as well, so that's, that's kind of my concern all along is we're having this conversation. School administration's building a budget and we really should be talking about this three months prior to the state, but that's a different conversation. The bigger concern that I have, and you mentioned school retention. I think at a high, um, Waukesha district had about seventy seven hundred students. It was typically always above seven thousand and now I, I believe we're below sixty seven hundred or. Sixteen, yeah, so the trend is continuing to go down and we're, we're typically seeing a big drop off is that. Eighth grade to ninth grade on that, that decision. So the question is, why are, why are students doing that? Is there something, um, that could be done earlier in that or is that just the reality of the situation? But and then one of the areas, there's two areas that. The school district could really look at that could perhaps have an impact on the cost of education to the depth. The first is. It's my understanding that administration is reallocating resources that might not be needed. And the question really is, are those resources needed or not? And I think there's got to be a hard, hard line look at that, knowing that you're operating at seventy seven hundred students and sixty six hundred students. And it's not to say you want to operate at a bare minimum, but do you need all of those resources? And I think that comes into play at some point because it does impact that four and a half percent. That's not where I would necessarily start, where I think the biggest opportunity is inter. Inter, um, district school choice and not allowing students from outside of the district. But how do we take advantage of the regional district that we have? There were, there were opportunities in other areas that might be close to border towns where students might have to make a decision to go into a different town. But there are large cost structures associated with some towns in the district versus the others. And I think that that's an area that creatively, we can think of ways of allocating our resources effectively. And I know that that's something that Dr. Riley has seen open to, nobody's really put a plan for it or dedicated a task force to that. But that's something that I, I think you could start with polling some of your constituents, some of the citizens to see. Hey, if you live closer to, and I don't want to throw out names and towns, but there are people in Rutland closer to Paxton, I think to Paxton or to Princeton. Does it make sense for a student to have a K through eight experience versus three different schools in Rutland? And some, some towns might decide that that's, that's good for them and there might be an opportunity for that.
She was, I was literally just interjected, you're saying just within the five school, uh, the five, not necessarily looking outside of the five.
It's not a good deal when you look outside, um, it's a really bad.
Yeah. I, I never even thought about it, but when you say that, it does make perfect sense. I mean, I'm, I'm literally on the Holden line, so I don't know how close I am to the schools, I have no idea, right? But like, that would be a prime example of, you know, Holden line, I can, I can send my kids there, right?
If your kids would still be on that, yes. Well, that's, the kids would still be Rutland kids, you can count as Rutland.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not changing, it's just going to.
It will not change the financing structure, but it would, I think the main thing really is that the busing to get my kids to the Holden school, wherever the Holden, I don't know.
Or, or resources at a school, you might have a, a teacher that only supports eight students at one stu-, one school. You might have thirty two at another school that's over, well, has two or three teachers total, you could.
It also moves to help with that, I mean, that's.
What would you do with those? So there, I think there would be opportunities there where you would see some savings and some operational efficiency. I think of it as like a restaurant that has five locations.
That's an interesting point that Austin and I looked into it a little bit also. And the regional district, the regional agreement states that every elementary school student is set to go to their own elementary schools, um, and middle schools. So I think to your point, trying to offer, figure out a way to either rework the agreement or offer it as an option. I just want to push back a little bit and say, our constituents or your constituents also, because you're also elected. So I just want to say like, I'm hoping that we can do this all kind of together as like Rutland elected and appointed officials. That's just.
Yeah, I'm glad for you to say, I agree with you on that.
I think oftentimes it's over the course of the time that I've been on board, it's been school committee versus town. And I think we're trying very hard to make it, you know, the school, a healthy vibrant school district is a, makes a, helps a healthy vibrant town. Just as a healthy vibrant town helps the school and so we can try to be more, and that's just a statement from me personally. And I think I'm hopeful for that from across everyone in this room and beyond, so.
We weren't regionalized, we, we'd be a department of the town, not, not a separate entity.
Yeah. Um, when you're, uh, talking to the greater school board, right, not just obviously well in, but like to the overall Waukesha's original. And you say things like this, that, you know, you're talking about this, here's some ideas, just, do you feel like they're receptive to that, are they listening to, no?
Well, Dr. Riley's, has brought up the, the inter-district, uh.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah.
In general, do you feel like there's a lot of reception as far as ideas and, and coming up with different things to look at? Or is it kind of like, we're going to do business and go on? Just curious and I know you.
I don't see this. My, my perspective is I don't see the school committee, when you're very much changed, I see a more of, um, giving direction from the superintendent and being reactive. But that's, that's my personal experience, but other people might have a different perspective.
I, I think I do have a different perspective because as much as, um, so I think, I felt like you were asking about administration and their willingness to. But in, in my, from my perspective, it's school committee's responsibility to deal with policy and budget and, uh, the administration's superintendent. And not necessarily to, um, drive programs like. Inter-district school choice, for, for example. It shouldn't be, it, from again, my perspective, it shouldn't be school committee that's coming up with these ideas to try and, and make it work. Of course, when they're brought up or, and, and we're of course, um, allowed to, you know, say whatever we want, uh, and give them any ideas. But, um. You know, administration, they are the experts.
Yeah.
They know how to educate students and, um, to, to some extent, that's, you know, I'm, I'm happy to push back if I don't agree with them. Um, but, but I do take what they say, you know, to, to be true. I do think they have the best interest of his heart.
I would add that it would take a huge lift to put a program of, of some sort of community of schools together. They know of all the ins and outs and details, I don't think that that's going to be something you can do overnight. Um, and, and just having the bandwidth, they're playing school, so it's really just juggling priorities and we all have a feeling.
So Austin, can I ask what you, so it's a four point five five increase is level service from the school? What did you ask the departments for, level service or level funded?
Uh, so the select board directed me, you asked departments for a level funded, what request?
Okay. So four point five five, they're getting level service, what we're going to do is keep the monies the same. So in theory, we're losing certain, we could potentially lose services. This costs have gone up, whether we like it or not, costs have gone up.
Yeah, the majority of the increase, I'm just, I, I just asked Austin if you could get that electronically for us, because again, I just want to stay, I just like to pass it around. Um, but that's, I don't know if that's the right way to do it. The majority of the increase was retirement healthcare, uh, and, and healthcare costs, which is almost uncontrollable. Really how much, I mean, I, I looked at the number and it was a little bit, uh, astounding to me as to how, uh, healthcare can go up sixteen percent for retired, um, people. But, um. Yeah, it happens.
Yeah, eighty percent of the school budget is, is staff.
Right.
Okay, and, um, almost all of it is contractual. So if we're changing those numbers in, to, to go down, then the only way to do that is to re, remove staff.
Well, it's, it's really about the same thing that's going to happen in town. I mean, that's, and that's the only reason I asked, I, I, I understand that, uh, believing, I understand that, but that's the reason I asked, just so that we know where the level playing field is. Because you keep level funding, you're not going to retain staff here in town either.
I also, um, recommended to Dr. Riley just the other day, that, um, again, when the next big contracts, uh, go around that. We try and, um, try and remove ourselves from the pack. Because that, there really is no control there over the benefits and healthcare, um, that school district is paying. Um, but we, we don't have a big say, right? The teachers union takes up fifty two percent, I believe, of, of the, uh, control. And the control of the pack, they have that vote, um, school committee doesn't have a vote there. If, if we don't, um, make a change there, I don't see how we can, uh, have any, any say in what happens with the benefits.
Question. If you could explain to me, what do you mean when it comes to the high school, for whole service? Does that mean we're not hiring anybody else, we're not getting more equipment, we're going to keep everything the way it is? What do you mean by level service?
Me, it's, it's, um, keeping the same service for the same kids. Now granted, every year that changes, right? We might have more special needs kids, we might have more ELL kids. It, so it, you, we have to provide certain services for certain kids. So if that means that they're moving from eighth grade to ninth grade and they have a one-on-one para that they have to, you know, have with them. Then that money there comes, comes with them, right? We have to fund that. So if you, I guess we can't just say the money for the high school, right? Because money kind of goes with the kids. Um, I, I do think that means that they're not buying any additional equipment. But it doesn't, it does mean that we can still can provide them the same education. So if they have twenty four kids in a classroom, we're keeping twenty four kids in a classroom. And we're not putting thirty kids in a classroom.
Or like one guy's counselor and it's a hundred kids or something like that.
Right.
The ratio, based, level service ratio, the kids are going to stay the same.
Yeah.
And that might get shifted depending on where the kids are or where the needs are, if there's efficiencies that can be, you, you know, Dr. Riley had talked a little bit about this through attrition and everything. Realizing efficiencies at the high school where they've seen a larger, we've seen a large decrease in student population than some of the other schools. So not necessarily, you're maintaining staff, but not necessarily in the same building. And it's tough because Waukesha city is third, I believe with thirteen million. So even a population drop of a hundred students a year. Over thirteen schools is hard to have a significant reduction in. The budget because there's minimum staff in, in buildings that buildings require. But to Matt's point, if we can reallocate students to some of those buildings, there's some things it would potentially.
And let's add to also to something that's about the eighth and eighth, ninth grade is where we're losing most of the majority of our kids, it's very true. Um, also our level of state funding for the high school kids is higher than for the elementary kids. So the more kids that is in the high school, the more money we're losing. Um, the high school did just do a little bit of a, a marketing program with an open house, um, and they had over two hundred kids come. Uh, hopefully we'll get to keep some more, I think that a lot of people in our towns don't know about the programs that high school has. They don't know that they have an auto shop, they don't know that they have partnership programs for computer science. They don't know that they have, uh, graphic design programs, they don't know that they offer early college or dual enrollment. So a lot of things that they do offer, I don't think they know. So hopefully, um, the, the efforts that they're putting in will, will help keep some kids.
And the study, I guess phase one. And the study, I guess phase one. Define. Any type of reasoning why the eighth and ninth were losing students into the high school.
No, it wasn't based on that, it was more based on actual population.
So we still don't know the reasoning for it, we're assuming, cause we're running these programs and we're letting people know. But we don't actually have real data telling us, here's where we have to change things, here's why people don't send their kids.
They don't even have to tell us where they're going.
Paul had said that he has some data, but it's not comprehensive, because to speak to these points, there's no mandate. That they have to tell us why they're not continuing their education.
Or where they're going even, right.
We traditionally will lose a certain percentage to some of the private schools around the area, just. The natural vocational schools. We have waitbooks that are for vocational, technical, St. Holden's and the same thing, and that's. That's 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 been a trend across the state um. In the news recently, Shrewsbury partnered with Lester to build a vocational program. So that's something that. When you think about long term, that might be an opportunity to retain more 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 students and think about with that. Might need to move from it from an impact perspective, because the funding for vocational classes is is much. Much greater from the state, it's a different level, so that's an area where. Then you start to look at where do you have building capacity to build that in, does it make sense to start looking at it? Other areas to partner with other towns to be able to do that, and I think that's where we could get creative. Long term to help prevent that. That trend has not changed since then.
Another point is that the facility, the high school facility itself needs a fair amount of repair and maintenance put into it, money put into it. I, the shop we brought up, the shop floor had some issues this year. Um the E C C also needs money put into it, the roof are leaking, so keep that in the back of your mind that there is upkeep to be done.
The reason I asked you about the students, should we do? I look at why she is offering a product, what is education? Just like any company out there, if your product starts to dimension sales, nobody likes it. Unless you understand why, you can't fix the problem. That's why I asked you for that, if you have that, if you don't, I see that as almost a an unfixable problem. Cause we don't know for sure, we know that there are families. And and my kid or one of them that says, well, I'm gonna go to private school no matter what. You know, get that, so we know there's that percentage that do that, but the rest we don't, so. Uh I see that as kind of conundrum, trying to retain our students that way.
We we've looked at the data and leading up to that, so to your point, um getting that data afterward is. It was very reactionary, right, when something's already had, it's left out the door, and there have been. Data points throughout kids' journeys, and this is across the five towns and. There is a drop off where kids start to not feel a connection to the watchers that um greater. District of education, and I think that's an area that we can think about ways of how do we. Hit the Rutland experience and and broaden that across the district, or create some opportunities for inter-interaction to create that camaraderie.
As good as the. Watch you should open houses, and I'm sure they did a marvelous job, gotta be bad. Showed it, if you're a kid and you're on that, you're a teenager, you're all. So as much as watching is in grade school. They they can't block, and they have more money to get blocked, so it's unfortunate, you. And by the time we, if we are able to build a vocational. We're never gonna catch them.
Oh, that's, I I mean.
We we can build the funnel we got, we're gonna build the vocational. I'm just saying, it it's unfortunate, right, we're. That's gonna catch up, that bus is already gone.
Well, I also think it's it's our need to compete with that, I I think that I. Well, if we wanted to get more of our our students into vocational, I think the partnership with Chisara and Lester is right in our back door, I mean, to me, that's. That's an easier solution, if that's something we wanted to expand, our our students wanted to expand their opportunities in technical vocational, that's. That's what we should be looking for, not building it ourselves, I mean, we're absolutely confident that if that's something that all five towns wanted to do and thought it would be. Hopeful, you know, I think that's worth looking at, right, but um I think there's other opportunities that would make they make sense as well. Yeah, and and just to note, having worked in education as well, um we had impossibilities of finding if students transferred or left. It was impossible to find where they went, so um and not having that data is well within the norm and and the it is the norm. You will never get that data, you'll get pieces of it, you'll get fractions of it, but you'll never get the whole story.
One area where they could, we are, and I'm I'll. Take as a takeaway from this, I'll certainly, I'll shoot Dr. Riley, and I'm aware of a number of students that left during COVID. For private schools or whatever, and they're back, um and what they have in perspective as to what their experiences here versus. Outside, and a lot of that stuff plays very favorable to what I've heard, like seeing from people from testimonials, so I think. That's the type of point of like, how do you market that appropriately to the people to retain?
Open house is a great idea, I'm glad they did, I saw a bunch of positive things on social media about it, but. And guys always, those guys on the top floor, I always show too. And they, and you know, they hit, you know, well.
The other thing about about Baya Path and the both schools is they get to choose, right, they get to select who goes to their school. So even if we have some programs available to kids who maybe wanted to go and couldn't. Or just kids who don't wanna drive forty-five minutes in the morning and don't wanna be on the bus at six A M. You know, if we get those kids and we have them engage in something that they're interested in. And you know, makes the rest of their day, okay, um I think that that's that's a big draw.
One part of this whole thing is. We're talking about buildings and this high school needs work, the E C C, this one, that one. And as well, if you listen closely, they recommend that nightclubs get closer. Why? They they not saying it. It's getting closer, but. Well, after that, this that's, I mean, it's ironic, um that's probably one of the most important in the district, it is. They need a great job trying to keep it up, or it's coming.
I think they check out a way of that to do this every year, I can see it, cause I'm one of the facilities subcommittee, I can see the list and I'm crossing things off. I haven't seen the same level at the high school in the E C C. I mean, I feel like when we have these overrides, the towns want to see that money go into their individual schools, and we're forgetting about the high school and the.
Over the past two years, I was seeing four students from the eighth grade in Rutland go to St. John's. Okay, so in other words, they're looking at other schools besides what you said, and thinking seriously about it, so.
I think one of the ones we gotta concentrate to on is, and we get to the point of renegotiating contracts, do something with the buses. I mean, I pass tiny buses in this district every day, if I've got ten kids on them, that's a miracle. I add they'd contractually obligated right now, but it's unfortunate that we're running all these buses. And having a million amount of kids.
And the 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 really hard part is that we did go out to bid and we had one bid.
I know, right?
Like, what do you do with that?
Do you think the district would ever be simply doing what Wobbling did, or not Wobbling, what uh Worcester did and take it on internally? I mean, I think there would be an in- uh increase in cost on the front side, I think. What Worcester is realizing a lot of cost savings and having some ability to also utilize the buses. Outside of their contractual hours, if they wanted to do field trips or have access.
I think it's a very interesting thought financially, but um just from what I hear about the bus company having so much trouble getting drivers. I'd be worried that we'd be in the same boat.
But I mean, that's one I wonder is also, but I don't know, because I don't know, I haven't heard that Worcester is having issues. In fact, I feel like they feel that they're more supportive that that they're part of the district, but I don't. I don't know if I'm sure that's just kind of anecdotally, and so I don't know.
I'd like to know in this study, if you guys could recommend why. Parents feel the need to pick up their kids and drop them off every day at school.
Even though.
I'm like, oh my, I mean, I know I went to school a few years ago, but we we did not want. Mommy and daddy to pick me up, I didn't want any product, and it's, it's an epidemic.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you, um it's it's scientific, um there's actually. And this would be a savings to the district. High school students typically leave. We we see infants and and kids that are young will be up up early in high school, kids will be out late working. Um baby, they still need their eight hours, we start our high school first. And we start our youngest kids last in the ti- timing of of the day. And that's part of the impacts, and you think of. Parents are typically up with that young kid, they're probably doing things, et cetera. And that drop off just becomes part of the room versus like, hey, let me just get him out to the bus, let me get him on, and then we're going to school. That also impacts to your point on busing, so you think about it, we take. All of the buses in the five towns and we pick up all the high school kids. And we bring them to the high school, and we take all those buses, you know, all the way back up to the towns. And now we've got to drive all the kids around the town, where it would make more sense to start the buses in the towns. Do your routes in the town, drop the kids off at the schools, your buses are still in those towns. Take the high school kids down the road to the high school. It would take a flip of of how the district operates, but that to me. Is it goes with the science of sleep and and development with with students. It also goes from operational efficiency with your busing, and it takes. A lot of the, I don't wanna say power, it takes a lot of that power out of the the bus company, because it becomes a very. Operational and efficient model, where you can say, we need X amount of busing, we don't need a bus before students, because we support the county.
How long has done that recently, on Bigfoot, the elementary start too much earlier.
Now, the science is there, it makes sense again.
But we will progress and bring that up in this issue.
Well, the problem is, it probably makes sense, but there's probably some rules somewhere, you can't do that.
Doesn't it, doesn't it affect the sports too?
What I'm gonna say also, some of it, what I said, what I said at the beginning about how I want the collaboration, if we hear like these ideas from school committee perspective. If we can try to be open minded on our side also and and really have an open mind about it. It's gotta take a a mindset for sure.
But not from a game standpoint. Because we wouldn't get to the games in time. Right now, our kids leave like for soccer, at least I know. They would.
Make more sense, so let me coach too, so they could actually go coach.
Approximate cost per student is?
Nineteen thousand? Total cost?
We pay nineteen thousand per student to go into.
I believe that that number was somewhere between seventeen and nineteen, I think it's.
Cost of educated student in to watch you should, you know, school district.
This is my favorite question, so it comes from the business world, where if I were to take total cost, I would take. Total operating budget divided by the number of students, I would come up with that. That is not how the Dussie likes to fill that number, so when I give the number, that's usually how I I look at that, you know. What Dussie publishes is, he takes into account things like um. Assistance on like meals or or where you are associated economically. That number we used to be at the bottom, we we moved so far up on that, but that conversation should, you know, that that's part of the market. And for years, I've mentioned this to the superhead, for years we said, we're the lowest funded per student. You start to say that and people hear that repetitive role, it becomes a negative, a negative marketing tool. We are, last I checked, we were above Hanover, Massachusetts on per student, and Hanover is a pretty. Pretty um affluent town on the south shore, and that's a good product, it was on the state level, I believe. Fifteen, sixteen thousand per per student at that level.
So if you just do what his calculation, which is obviously the right calculation, it's like eighteen thirty.
Okay, that's on. You don't just picking one kid for household, two kids for household, any amount of taxes.
It doesn't include, that doesn't incorporate the funding formula at all, right, that's not, it's a town's pay. It's the total cost of educating.
But it all goes to the, you have to go back to get to the right, I mean.
The state's paying about forty percent, so you could argue that that eighteen is being funded. Sixty percent from the town, and so it's like ten grand per student is from the town, which. I don't know what you got, but my real estate taxes, I think it's ten grand a year, but if one kid in school says I'm just paying for my one kid.
Thank you, while we were talking about buses, I just had a a, it was a good segue from my question where I think if I remember correctly from the budget documents. That were provided last year, the out of district transportation for special education was a huge chunk of money. So I'm curious if there's been any further discussion on. Um changing anything with bringing more special education back to the district, so that we don't have as much of an expense. Sending the kids out of the district for that.
There definitely has been an attempt to bring more kids back, beyond that, I can't.
Did you hear Jen?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, sure.
It's worth us asking, it's worth, uh I'll put it.
About dollars, yeah.
In my neighborhood, in my neighborhood, the high school bus is full, like the kids don't fit.
I'm glad your bus is full, but maybe I'm not glad if you're sitting trying to get down it, but.
But there's also some of the elementary buses, I've heard some parents this year. Are so full that they have to take attendance as they get on, and then when they hit their maximum, they stop picking up kids. That was an issue at the beginning of the year for sure, I don't know if it's been resolved, I know they were going back and forth with the district to try to figure. Out those situations, um so I think. Again, because we're a regional school, we have, we're mandated by the state provides a seat for every student. Whether they're on the bus or not, and the state, yeah, the state's supposed to reimburse us a hundred percent, they're not reimbursing us a hundred percent, I think this year it's high, right? It's like ninety, ninety-two percent, um years. Um, years past even as well as like, I wouldn't say like six.
It's gotten better, but it's still unfunded mainly by the state.
Yep.
And you know, we're the ones picking it up. So if we had that extra. That wasn't, if the district had that extra, that what they weren't asking the towns to pick up, where would we be?
Right, so it's.
So when we go to five towns, are the buses allocated equally or certain towns have more buses?
Yeah.
Yeah, like Rotten, for example.
Yep.
Where we have like thirty buses for this town. I'm just throwing the number.
Last I heard, there was eighty-six, I think last year, there was eighty-six buses for the district. And Holden has half of them. So there's forty, then Rutland has maybe twenty-five percent of. Twenty buses.
They get about a hundred in the morning if you miss.
I'm trying to think bus number wise, I think we got to nineteen or something, but I don't know for sure it's.
And I I guess imagine because I look at area acreage in terms of size of town to certain like maybe Princeton's travel. And the distance versus. And Rutland, which were pretty developed here, so we pick up a lot of kids at one time.
You you would definitely be interested if you saw like Princeton kids, where they go and how they get there and things like that and go to school, they've. And they're very, it's it's interesting, the different dynamics of the schools. Um, there's parts of Thomas Prince that are empty. You know, they don't have folk, but. It's interesting.
There's parts of Glenwood that are empty.
But that's what happens when you have declines in population, I mean, declines in population are gonna happen and you're, if you're not using a part of the building, is you're not staffing it, that means you're not paying for it. So I mean, that's part of rightsizing. And I have to imagine that there's complications from a school's perspective as far as. How they fund one year to the next with having significant changes in populations.
We know the school population four point five five. So that's, that's all budget related to salaries. Insurance benefits, right? So. That that's the basic, that's not probably doing a whole lot, so it's gonna be interesting.
No, that's the four five five five, I'm pretty sure it was just contractual.
Stuff where they were.
Yeah.
Because of course that doesn't take into account the town, what's the town required payment of local contribution, funding formula, right, that. We're possibly gonna end up in whole harmless again, depending on what the interest rates are. So add all those things together and that four five 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 number doesn't really mean anything right now.
I know, but it gives us something.
They said like ninety-five percent chance we're gonna hold harmless and I have no doubt that. This town has not become less affluent than it was last year, so I'm sure. Funding formula.
Has there any, has there been any discussion on a school board, the school committee? Level of pushing the budget to come sooner because the end of March is very late within the budget. Within the calendar year for the town?
I don't think we have discussions that I recall.
Because I think, I think. I mean, I think all of the town administration would probably like to get the numbers sooner than the end of March.
Yeah, I mean, I can only speak for the town. We finished our budget views with department today.
And three months to find out what sixty percent of the budget is gonna be.
We still won't have, for example, uh, healthcare numbers. Or I'm just saying like.
Plug high.
The same thing, I don't have, I don't have, I don't have healthcare numbers for mine for next year, but I gotta get mine back because I can't. Wait, oh, I gotta wait until June.
Would it be in preference, that means serious, would it be preferred for us to plug high and give you a high number that's?
If we just gotta get it to us three months earlier, yes.
Or even two months, like if you get it within January timeframe, so we can, yes, absolutely.
I love that idea, but no way.
Why not?
Why? We ask our departments to have everything in.
I see how it goes. I mean, the ask, we can make the ask.
I would say, because I think the sooner we get it, then we can do what we here have to do to to.
Plan for the worst.
Plan for the worst and and get that the word out, that's the whole thing. You know, but if we don't get it until April first, we only have a month to sell it.
But to Matt's point, I mean, when we were, your first point was, you know. You would kind of wish that we were talking about this three months ago so that we can push towards how we're gonna fund that. Um, so the earlier we get that kind of stuff, the more we can. Kind of sell it to the town, right? And say, here's what's happening and when 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 we have a month or or less to do so. Um, you know, a lot of the time isn't here about it. I think, uh, you know, the idea of having all of the towns going for some sort of override in the future, I I I think it's gonna be. Well, whatever. Um, hopefully sometime in the future, if not this year. Uh, going for an override, um, it would definitely be beneficial to have. Uh, one, a plan from the school of of a good five year, hopefully more plan. Um, that it has some sort of. Generalized price tag to it and what each town is going to need to come up to in that five year period. So that everyone can go to their towns and say, here's where, you know, here's where we're going and that that would be a much easier sell. Um. Yeah, absolutely. Having having the budget earlier, even if it's an estimation, um, honestly, like. Healthcare, you almost, everyone almost knows where it's gonna be. And and it's, if you've done it at all, you you kind of guess it and it's. You're usually like one percent off. Um, so even though you wait three months to get it, it's like the same number that you thought it was all along. It's pretty, it's pretty standard, unfortunately. Um. So yeah, I think that it's, if it's possible, and and we would, we would definitely appreciate it if it was, um, asked.
I think Oz is gonna appreciate it more than us.
Everyone will appreciate it. If we could get, uh, the the school budget sooner, even if it is an estimated number. Um, and make our cut out of this and also say like, you know, this is estimated and, um, that would be an awesome ask.
Ask them back another, the things that you guys have with Jen.
Uh, I I don't know, I don't want to see. I mentioned that at the budget meeting with the district last year. So I mentioned whoever was there, um. But certainly, I mean, I I and I think the district and the other town administrators are aware of our schedule. Um, and we've all been talking about where we are in terms of budget and timeline. Um. But I'm also not aware of discussions that. Your business requirements, I don't know, but instructions. I don't know where they are in their process. I would also say that this is only in seconds here, going into its third year, right? So if he was unable to do it within the last three years, okay, that kind of makes sense, yeah, but I can see the complication and need more time. But as we get through these years and he has more experience within this town or within this region. Uh, I would think that that kind of capability would certainly come come to life. Um, so whether or not it can happen this year, next year, whatever, but I think pushing that that timeline would absolutely be better.
So once we have that five year plan that we talked about.
I would be, I I don't think it's gonna happen this year, right? I mean, it's almost.
It's not gonna happen.
Yeah, we sent our budget instructions out November fifth. And we would do, uh, December second, right? We just finished our reviews of departments today. I mean, I don't think it's. You know, unreasonable, takes about a month, right, to. Get through the whole process of departments developing, sending, doing reviews, right? So. If you ever done that, but I don't know. As you, I I don't know.
I would, I'm guessing, and I guess, at this point, I would guess that that the principals have been asked for their feedback. Get on that, I would.
Yeah.
You think that's about right, Jen?
But they also made a very cross forward plan, and we're gonna probably review them completely through March.
Sound of all the presentations at the last school committee meeting, it sounded like they were thinking, you know, high, at the very minimum high level. Thinking. Working.
So again, in a partnership. The school committee, again, speaking for myself, you know, the school committee has a bit of hope, but the school committee could. Look at our calendar, that I know that's been said and say, does it make sense that perhaps schedule meetings closer together over the next. We'll call it six, six weeks, January might be around the corner, but January still is February third or first, right? Could be a timeline that we shoot for and perhaps not something that we could at least. Get names on the on the the calendar that can put us to a place where we could get to a place that, like, what we want about the title, yeah. I don't know the answer to that, although having that adjusted, but. The chair of the school committee also controls what's on the year agenda and there are all the things that might be pertinent to the public in the company.
First of all, you're happy with it.
But that, and I understand that, so it might not be this year, but. I know I would appreciate it if you would bring that to the school committee and say, could we push this a little bit early? It would assist at least our town and I think you would get most of the towns, I think, would agree that it would help. Because it makes it easier to sell it if you have the time to do the information sessions. Because we all are in the know because we're involved in, but to get it back to the general public, it's very important and you need to have time to do so. It's it's really important. So that's the thing, that's the, I get it, you you don't have that control, I understand that, you know, I'm asking is just go and ask. If you say no, if they say no, then fine, but at least ask. It was, if they haven't been, and I'm not saying to happen ask, but if the school committee asks, it might have.
Can the, can the school committee go to those information meetings, these three members that represent all and go to why? Meetings with townspeople, their citizens, well, I'm just asking if there's some rule if they can.
I wouldn't think so. No, but similarly, they probably can't talk on behalf of us. Right?
So I think.
They're they're putting in information. You go for.
If we're going for no ride, they're gonna be right with us. If.
So we go back to the override conversation that was last Thursday, last Thursday. Was very much a a team effort from all five towns. And I think what that tells me is that. The school would be helping in override conversations, it would be maybe even much larger town halls that would be inclusive of the schools. You know, superintendent being there, things like that, which would, I think, have a much larger impact. Um.
I think when we did our last override, Dr. Riley was at most of the, most if not all of our information sessions, and I think there was school committees. Between the three of you, I think we had the fourth member also at that time, there was representation at all of those meetings also from school committee, so it wasn't. Totally in a bubble, but I think that that override wasn't as inclusive as the schools as what the conversation on Thursday was, is if. If towns are looking for overrides. Or if the, or the schools are going to be the driver of the override, then it needs to really be a partnership. And if there's multiple towns looking at overrides within the next one to two, three years, does it make sense to try to bundle it all together? And and do the. Have in intra-town coordination as well as coordination with the district. Similar to, you know, I kind of referenced what Truesbury did a few years ago with a big corrective override. Um, it's a little bit different because they're not a regional school. But, um, they have, you know, they put out statements and commitments and everything and and then they invested a lot of their their excess. Into their sta- um, stabilization and everything that has made money handle access. So I think their original override was four and a half, five million. Um, and now they have realized, I think, almost double that, I believe, because their investments and everything.
I can look.
I'm not saying that's what we should count on, but I'm saying that it was a a multi-department commitment with. Really knowing that the schools are a large percentage of most of our smaller community projects.
They split your override up into different departments or one thing?
It was one thing, but it was commitments from all of the departments that.
But they also have more control over what they're doing with the schools. That's the other thing, right? So they have more control and 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 I mean, no disrespect to you folks, but that's the whole thing, it's. Um, they're not saying it's true, but it definitely does occur that, okay. I've been selling this board for a long time, and again, no disrespect, but the thing is, is it's, it's get the budget put through and we can't about fifth. And and now that's the, we end with this and we then wait the fourth and fifth and it's been tough. And it's a hard pill to swallow and it would be nicer. You know, because when you get this information in March, you've got a month left to try to do it and it's a lot of. Hard work. In the past, we didn't have. Necessarily the right people in the front office, so we had to do a lot of it ourselves. But it's a lot of effort and it is a very good. Um. Morale booster, but killer, I guess, when you have to go through and go, okay, well, here's the school, so now here's where we have to cut and that can be really tough. And if you watch any of our meetings that have been reported, you'll see what we had to do all those years. And it's kind of tough because we kind of just get told, here's your number. And that's, it's difficult. And for taxpayers, it's tough to hear as well. You know, whereas I know people in Truesbury and they do have more control over the school than we currently have over our school.
Students that are part of programs within the school, so we have that control, we can start investing in infrastructure. Actually, they pay back, so that's a prime example where we wouldn't necessarily have that control or.
In the national school, you don't, you can charge the buses.
Question, has there been a. Opportunity to. Push either from the school committee, the superintendent to develop a five year, a five year budget? Cause I haven't seen one, that's what I'm asking.
No, there was a very preliminary discussion at the last meeting saying that it would be a good thing.
Very good thing.
Yes, every.
And the reason enough is because you say you have such capital needs. Well, it would be nice if you could look future and say, here's our budget and it includes these capital needs.
There is a. Ten year capital.
We have a ten year capital plan, but that's not worked into the budget.
Capital deal for the.
But other than that.
So the point, right, so they submit, I think you guys had work a couple of months ago to approve capital request that then transmitted, which were then transmitted to C F C, right? So the two projects this year were the parking lots and the replacing the carpet. So that part of that capital plan, they then vote and so, yes, it's something within the budget because. It would be included in our way, in our.
But. If we, I don't think I've shown in pursuit, did I see that we have a roof, I think, that for two, three years, I'm trying to. Get a handle on the capital as part of the budget that's coming to us so we can work it in.
I'm sure that we can get you a copy of the ten year capital plan.
Okay.
Hey, yeah, so so that is. That was transmitted to the committee. Just to give you an idea. Uh, it's in there, um. Just to give you an idea. Over ten years, it's seven million dollars in capital. Obviously, I'm sure that is the fucking one.
Right.
Um. But, you know, there's roof replacements and boiler replacements and that's on that capital summary that was included in capital for last year.
State did us restart the program, let's call it the accelerated care program, it costs for roof spoilers and windows. So they started that, uh, and expanded it so that they are now taking applications for schools that need those particular items. And I'm sure it will be submitting at least for. And I'm sure it will be submitting at least for. I don't know if you see.
I don't.
Um. Yeah, for our older school rooms, for sure.
So you have the ten-year plan, okay. So you can forward it. Yeah, he is. Okay, okay, okay.
So I can issue a ten-year, I mean, gee, I'll hold hand with plan coming my way, right, right?
There, there, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Three thirty-four.
I hear about two thirty.
Yeah, this one's thirty-four.
Um, which I may have the line. The, the other question I have is you're in charge of the capital for the district. Capital needs.
Yeah. For facilities. Yeah.
For facility. I need to know more because there might be some questions I'd like to ask you about too, if you're interested.
Yeah, just, just online. This is.
A reason I sit on the capital from the planning.
Yes.
So it would help the budget of that.
Yes, I think that'd be great. And just want, obviously, make sure we look in at its time. So look in. I mean, a hundred percent forwards. Yes, constant discussions with Mark.
So the past few years, the facilities subcommittee has been made up of one hundred from each town. Make sure that every town is being representative and, you know, can actually see what's going on in the building.
I understand that I did fifteen years, I think of everything.
Anything from the, the school? Any questions for the finance committee or anything you guys were concerned about or wanted to ask about or want to know about or? What's left for us here too, but.
Appreciate you guys coming in.
Absolutely. Um, just a thought to follow up in January, February, something similar. That'll be my. Uh, okay.
Dr. Riley has also mentioned that he's happy to, you know, lead a contingent to Boston to. You know, talk about funding formula and how it's not working and, um, you know, two hundred and eleven towns are in whole harmless this year out of three hundred. Eighteen thousand we have, you know, it's two-thirds. It's, we're not in a good position. Things need to change. And, um, I, I do think he's looking for finance committees and select boards and administrators and school committees to. Truly all write letters or go to Boston to, to try and something because it, it won't help this year, but maybe it's, it'll help in a few years. I'm. Need to look forward to.
Seven, five, five, your bun, brand your bun.
Some of the things I got from M M A also is inviting the continuously like the within ninety-five. People to come see what it's like out here because we can go and talk. All that we can, but until, and there's been other instances where, um, communities have invited, you know, a lot of the economic development stuff in Western Mass and stuff. They end up inviting, saying, hey, come out and see what, what it's like here because. They don't have any concept because they're not, they're not here. And so, um, I think that, you know, we can work with our legislative delegation to try to invite. Some of the broader state legislation on visit. I just want to thank you guys for attending and, you know, I think Dr. Riley's been doing a good job trying to build the, the relationships with the communities. Um, and I want to, I would like to, personally, I would like to see that with all of us and, and not so much it's an us versus them. And if we end up going for an override at some point, having the support of. Our school committee members and the, the support of the people that you represent might be different than the people that we represent. We obviously all represent the same town and people, but you're. We focus maybe a little bit more or not. So, um, if we can do a better job of being collaborative and having these kinds of discussions. Um, then the bigger part of it is that.
You said to re, re, uh, reconvene in the February timeframe, does it make more sense to wait until we have a, a filing budget that we were thinking?
Yeah, sorry.
So whenever we have a budget, let's, um.
I think the budget roundtable is scheduled with the district, the official one, the end of February, the twenty-something. I think it's in my head. Yeah, it's in twenty-six.
Is that when we first get the actual, but like, yes.
It's not even, it's usually not complete by now.
Well, we could at least meet the converse.
I think that would be the draft, like the proposed draft or something. I don't know.
Typically that that happens and then school has to go in here.
Right. I'd like to talk to you a few minutes. You mentioned that the union is fifty-two percent of the bank of that contractable launch. I'm not sure if you know by that, but I'd like to.
I have.
There's a problem. So, yeah. Well, something like that. It was over fifty.
The teachers' union, the teachers' union, it's one and a half of the pack.
Not like talking about what that means.
I like sharing that side of it. I think it's, I, I feel curious, but the pack is part of the healthcare package and any changes to that.
Have you approved?
By the teachers' union holds fifty-two percent of the vote. So, so if any changes to that would require the teachers' union to.
Yeah.
And just so how to compare this, for example, now with localies, we have insurance advisory committee, we have both employees, uh, members of each collective by the, in up some nine. They need a recommendation to the select board or the total, the select board's decision.
So, but I can, the notion about the contract gets a super talented, which we could do. That decides.
How were the trials for the healthcare?
It's the pack, we have the, the school committee, the administration has any say.
Oh.
And that was exactly when the district was formed in the, eighty, I mean, that was an agreement. Not to go to I C and to go with this.
You need, you need a, a purpose to, to make that, so. Pick them up and we have a, 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 a very collaborative, put it together, figure out like. Order the levers that are going to be able to be able to make them. We did make a headway on the G O S in the pack. A few years ago, but it's still not at a place where. With the cost of health insurance and real one of that, we, a level that can be adjusted with. Right, that's why I was asking. Unfortunately, they have fifty-two percent for a reason, right? If you want, it's not what we're. Think we want to talk.
Unfortunately, somebody way back then, many years ago. Thought that was a good idea.
I thought that, uh. In general, people who work in education are paid less and generally speaking, the benefits are better. So to have overall benefits is not really out of the norm as far as the education. As far as wanting to take a job in education.
And if you do look at our, uh, districts financially, I think that you would see that we do offer better benefits and lower wages. Slightly, I mean, not, not any big numbers, but, you know, if, if, if the, if the scale is, uh, you know, twenty to twenty-five dollars, we're in the twenty to twenty-one range. But we have very good benefits.
And then anyone before we.
I promise you, bring this up. Um, I know that. The way I was, what they say, but. Um, this, this override process, it's going to be higher. It's really going higher. My. Conversations around town, like my social folk is a little bit in, in the normal, I think, in the town. Um, but there's a lot of folks out there that are really resistant. To seeing a change in a, or increase in tax rate and they're like. One day to the cap. About that was killed by the, or the person who lived, the C A P. Like, of course. Certainly, sorry. Certainly, sorry. Take it in. Pay your attention. Thank you for that.
We went down in flames.
It's representative, I think, of the emotions. If you're going to end up, if we are going to end up going to the voter, ask them to be able to provide. Increase funding to be able to do some of these things are, are really quite logical and absolutely necessary. It's going to be, it's going to take a tough sell. We didn't do one conversation last year and we were here to get them. Um, we're a little disappointed with. What we.
We're, we're already there and done with.
Yeah, just, again, nobody, everybody there knows exactly that comment, but I promise they're.
I didn't know you were listening.
And I, I brought it up, I brought it up at the meeting the other night, to the Thursday night meeting with, with that roundtable that. Rutland coming out of the November election, Rutland, the, the message from Rutland very much was.
Yeah. I think the, I remember the, like, the, the people that knew how quickly we went through the override.
Right.
Were upset with us.
Yeah.
And it hasn't gotten any better.
No.
And it, and it's across age demographics and all.
Are we fine with the, the, just so that if they want to say they can, they're welcome to, but I. We're gonna go talk about other stuff.
Is that, is that, is there any other business for the slide board? Cause we can stay and adjourn or we can stay. But I don't know what the comment is going to continue, but.
I, I just want to summarize where the budget is and that was, I've seen where we.
You asked a question of the slide board?
No.
Are you guys thinking of, like, I'm, 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 that's true, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Yes, I also, as well, I have that, as our municipal rep, Leah has. More than any other municipal rep that I have seen in my junior school committee, she comes to every meeting except for the ones when they're just like for a meeting. So talk about informed, she is like. I mean, I'm, I'm very impressed with your diligence in, in attending our meetings because they're long and they're a lot. And, uh, there's a ton of information. So, but, but she is, she's showing up to, to all of them and, and it's greatly appreciated.
That's what she gets the most.
Thank you, Carrie. Yeah, we did vote to, um, or, uh, uh, like we have another special funding because of the, um. Challenges with the citizens petition. It wasn't. There were missteps there.
What's the cost of, of special funding?
Yeah, how much?
Not much. Not much.
What, two grand?
One to two.
I have six.
And we're gonna get the two grand.
I was way up, coming out of the, the, uh, select which budget. Which I don't think we have. You do.
Yeah, I'm cheering for it.
It, it can be much because it's just a, it's a, it's a gather. It's not like it's balancing all of this.
We have to pay all the. You have to set up, you know.
Two hundreds? I don't know.
Also, and so. Honestly, Slapboard haven't called it yet, but I, I think you guys were thinking, um. Now with the school, I'd save.
We talked about during here, like similar to what we did for the buy law one, um, we did have conversations about the cost and what that is. It wasn't. I mean, it wasn't.
So I guess my. Get this in my head square.
What, you're meeting for Monday night?
I, uh, are we for, are we facing possible litigation if we don't do this?
I.
Don't know.
Sure, if, if I, it's, it was, I was under the impression that if we didn't do the town meeting the way we did. John had enough support to be able to do another citizen's petition to probably call one himself for a request. Just via the petition. That I think he was planning to do.
Either we do it or he gets enough petitions to force us to hang on. I don't plan it, but no. Individual. Yeah.
But how many people would really come?
You need ten, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if he gets his signatures, it's the same, it's the same piece. If we call it, then we can advertise it and. And have a little bit more control over it than if. He gets petition, if he gets the two hundred signatures, then we as the board have forty-five, we have to call a meeting within forty-five days.
So you can still advertise it.
Right, right, right.
You have to advertise.
No matter what, we have to.
Right. But we're not facing possible litigation if we don't do this.
I'm not, I'm not aware of, but I, I don't, I don't know.
I think the individual is fair enough that all he wants to do is get a business going, basically. That's it. Of course, I'm welcome with that.
Right? Okay. Uh, Pete had asked for a budget update, uh, at the beginning of the meeting. I said that we can wait till the end. I, I mean, uh, just a quick update. I don't know if you want.
The only question I had was, I know that you made the request to go to the town in Congress.
Yeah.
And now today I find out that it's been back, it's been all collected.
Why don't you just give a general overview of Laura and, and the process and just, just, just so we had an update?
Yeah, sure. And, um, it's good to have any conversation because I also want to get some feedback from, well, clearly both groups, but. Um, given s- some of the discussion tonight, I think obviously the town, we could be in a position to present. Um, town figures, uh, but. I'm curious what. Is the world of the board and committee for when you'd like to actually see a final recommended budget, knowing that we don't still have. Sixty percent of our spending package. So, um, I'm asking. Respectfully, what do you want this timeline to look like? And also if there are big decisions. Like an override, I, I need some direction from both of you. Um, so I can go back to staff and.
Well, can we put a line item in for the schools on the really high side? The coverage?
But like, so, so how, how, how would we do that?
Cause I mean, the problem is we could put in four point five five and then say, okay, let's double it. So it's, you know, twice as high is what they're going to go back with. But you also have to take into account that we don't know what our required, um, funding is. Based on the, the federal formula, the state formula, right? So we could throw a pie in the sky, but like, it could be, and that's going to have a huge impact too, right? Like. If we put ten percent in, it's probably going to be like a two to two and a half million dollar deficit, right? So like.
The first room on the street is thirteen and fifteen.
Thirteen and fifteen, what?
That's out there, thirteen and fifteen percent.
Oh, I haven't heard thirteen and fifteen.
Thirteen and fifteen, that's out in the. So, it was cool.
Close to the three, three million.
I don't know where that's coming from.
Yeah.
I don't know either. I'm just telling you what is being said out there. So I, I didn't do any homework. I'm just telling you what I'm hearing.
So, so. What I can give you right now is my estimate based off the level services budget that they presented. Based off of averages, right? So it's F Y seventeen, Rutland has been, on average, has been. Twelve point eight eight percent of the total spending package. Now, I went a little bit more conservative. I went, went up to fourteen percent. I know that our proportional share of the budget has calmed down, but I want to be conservative.
Cause our, our mandate could go up. So, yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, so, um. Based off of that, um. At fourteen percent of that hundred and twenty-seven million, it's seventeen point seventy million dollars. That's about a one point four million dollar increase over this current fiscal year. Uh, putting that into our, um. Long-term financial model.
That at the four point five five, though.
It is, yeah.
So theoretically, it's.
Yeah, yeah, um. Putting that.
I don't think that's theoretical and then truthfully, theoretically, it's more four point five five. But truthfully, it's gonna probably double if not more.
So put it into our model based off of, um, also an estimate that I have for Bay Path. Now, we also don't have a Bay Path number.
Sure.
Um, but, uh, I believe the enrollment is up thirteen students over last year. So, um, I. Just ballpark, put in about a fifteen percent increase for that. Um, so for educational, it's a overall eight point four percent educational increase. Um, for both, what's using Bay Path combined, um, for a total, um, spend of thirty-one point two million. Uh, seven point six nine percent increase, uh, which is, um, a projected deficit of just about one point now. Uh, seven point six nine percent increase, uh, which is, um, a projected deficit of just about one point now.
If we go more than that four point five, that's pushing it over two million, so, when, when are we going on this four point five?
Well, so, I mean, that's gotta be a question, right?
They, they were very honest. It's not gonna be.
He was, he was honest in saying he was gonna request one at four point five five. Whether that gets passed or approved is obviously. A no, right? But it.
So what happens at two, the two towns? What, and then an unnamed town? Uh, both down the school, over the school part.
I mean, it sounds like there's a strong chance that that could happen.
Well, what happened, what I understand would happen is a school, if they don't end up with negotiation, that's the way they wanna be. Then the school is gonna end up in a one twelve budget cycle, right?
Correct.
Alright, so, if that's the case, shouldn't we be looking at and trying to provide? To the school committee, what we think we can afford and with the realization that if they say. No, you've gotta fund this, we need to be able to tell them we can't. And committees and boards, we can't.
Yeah, and, and I can't speak for anything beyond what is it eighteen months that I've been here, but I, I think they tried that as long. And we do have the discussions and we've been talking, um, just. Um, the town administrator meetings with the superintendent. I mean, we've been talking about this budget process for a while. Um, and, you know, I've been talking to the select board, um, very also openly, I think, in meetings about our net position based off of averages. We've gone from estimating a ten percent increase up to a fifteen, now with this, down to about, back to around about a ten, so. Um, I think it's very public where Rutland is, um, and I can't speak. Obviously on what has publicly happened in the communities, but we know that Paxton had several field overruns last year and they're in the same. From just my overarching research of last year's. Olden, but if they used probably a record level reserves to balance their budget last year, um, I know that they're also against their.
So I guess I'm kinda curious, and this is for the school board and I, I don't think that. We, it would be appropriate for us to ask these three folks, but the school board in general, what are they prepared to do? If they get to the one twelve budget? And it's one twelve of last year's budget. What are they prepared, what? I mean, cause I think they need to be able to, if nothing else, they need to come to some of these sharing meetings to say. You know, we're gonna close down, I mean, we're gonna take the top four of the high school and close it down.
What, what, but why would, why would that happen?
Why would it happen?
If they got a one twelve budget, they get last year's, when they get, they get the one month's worth of stuff, why should it make any difference?
Because contracts gone up, prices gone up, they're still gonna have to pay those handbooks.
There will be level funding, which means reduced service.
Alright, but they still, they're still gonna continue on.
Yeah, the thing is, what are they, what's their contingency on that reduced budget? How would they operate?
Right, I really don't care about what you said as much as I care about Donald Relling. Because Donald Relling is gonna take a big. That's, uh, so what happens at the high school? I, I understand, we need to help and support that, but the town rolling is going to lose staff. We are going to lose services again. We just gone back.
Yep.
And we're going to lose a lot. If it's not this year, it's gonna be next.
Definitely.
Well, with level funded. You are going to lose services because prices have gone up.
I don't even think it's gonna be level funded.
What our, what we ask our departments for is level funded, which means you're not gonna be able to do as much because ten dollars doesn't go as far as ten dollars did last year.
That's right.
Well, and it hurts even more because there's also parts of our budgets that we can't level fund, right? We can't level fund our health insurance. Um, so our undistributed expenses alone, um, which includes health insurance pension. Is up just about eight percent, uh, which includes fifteen percent liability, fourteen percent for pension, health insurance. Um, Medicare, we're actually good for FY twenty five, we only went up four percent, but, um, this is the last year of our contract program, so. Looking at the insurance market, we put up fifteen percent, so, um, you know, really the only thing that is being reduced. On, uh, our fixed cost, uh, budget is our debt service. Um, so there's, as we've discussed, there's a significant deficit following, but even still, um, it's almost a three hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, as every.
I, I believe. Some way, I don't care what happens at high school. I want them to get whatever they need to, but we are gonna be hurt. This time.
Well, we're gonna be hurting if we agree to fund what they're asking.
Well, we don't, they overwhelm us at a meeting and it won't matter.
Overwhelm us at a town meeting.
Absolutely. You will not be that, we will not be that. The town services will suffer. And the scope, and, oh, at least that's what happened before.
Right, I'm still under the chairs on the row, on, uh, Glenwood Road going into the school. Still in them.
I, I will say that, uh, as, I'm sure this has happened in the past, though, uh. There was a lot of outrage from every person at that meeting as far as the ability that the towns paid for. For the schools, so it, it felt like everyone was in, uh, having the same exact places we are. Especially Holden, they were livid. And then Paxton was quiet, but we know where they're at, right? So, uh, it seems like there's, at least from what I've heard. This happened in the past, more unity now than there has been in the past, but I, I also have not been in the past, so I don't have as much experience.
Usually at those meetings, there is a lot of, we have to keep it down, we have to keep it down, we have to keep it, but those are the people that are in the know. So we're all sitting there as making the decisions, but then the calls go out, we all know the calls go out. Papers come out and it's, you know, and then we've got the, you know, we're gonna have to cancel all music and art and, and. They do a very good job, and I'm not saying that this administration will do the same thing the last administration, but in the past, they've done a very good job. Of getting word out as to what they will lose. And we unfortunately don't have that ability to do that.
So this whole thing with the, the, the district. It is intrinsically adversarial. It's Rutland versus Holden, Holden versus, um, Paxton, Paxton versus, um. It, it is adversarial, and so you're always gonna get those kinds of conflicts going back and forth. Somebody wants something particular to their area, okay, that, that's just a factor that matters. Um, it doesn't lend itself, uh, because we had, when, when Jim first came on, I asked him. What are you doing to reduce or, or, uh, investigate and, and. Uh, install efficiencies within the school system itself, the schools, all the schools. What they have in, in, um, Glenwood versus what they have in the Princeton school. Are you doing anything to be able to not buy as much, spend as much, because you've got maybe twice as much. Um, resources now sitting in two different areas and it's just not efficient. And he said, they were looking at that. Why, he said, everybody wants their own peace. So, it, it is adversarial. We have to recognize that, I don't know, how we.
Well, I think that, I think that's a very good point and, and the fact that it needs to be more team based oriented, right? And I think that, that leads me into another point about a lot of thought that has gone into, in conversations that have already happened in this town. Around regionalizing services, and that's something that needs to be seriously talked about. As we get more and more into these parts of not being able to afford things and on the town level, not necessarily school level. Um, this needs to become a serious point of conversation, and I think we as a finance committee need to. Request and, and understand what that would mean and, and how that would result in efficiencies and savings and, and. Look at that as an op- uh, look at that as an opportunity as opposed to cutting spending as to how we can. Be just be more efficient and, and work with the others around us, cause I have to imagine. That the towns around us have very similar feelings and very similar issues. I know it's, uh, it's been con- you know, conversations that happen about this in the past. Um, and it's, you know, everyone always, to your point, wants their own stuff. But I think we're getting to a point and ahead, and I think everyone sees it coming in the future too, that it's not possible, it's not sustainable, um, so. You, and if you were to regionalize and do different things like that, you don't see benefits right away. It takes time to see benefits. So if we're thinking that that's even a possibility in the future, that what needs to happen. We have to start looking at it now to see the benefits of it in three years.
I agree.
And to see how to do it based on the regional agreement that, that the district kind of combs with all the towns, so. Whether it's to Matt's point, informal agreements that we do because we can't change the regional agreement, the best district agreement, or. Or what?
But this could be outside of the what's in the district too. I'm talking about, so I'm just talking about our neighbors. How can we work with our neighbors to?
Well, dispatch.
Dispatch is a great example, of course, yeah.
They're, they're not, they're not committed to a particular town, they're committed to the people in those areas that they serve. And that's fine, that's the way which, that's the way it should work.
Yeah.
School, uh, the, what's used at school district really commits to the towns. They all, we all got our own schools. I mean, we, we share the high school. Okay, that's enough for now.
Yeah, we all have our own schools, but that, I mean, we, even if we were, if we were a big town instead of a, a region. We would still have probably this many schools.
But you're right, you're absolutely correct, but the thought was that we could share, we could.
Share resources.
Manage the, the distribution of the students.
Yeah.
So that they might be able to take advantage of something in a Princeton school, they can't get in a Rutland school and that kinda stuff. That would be great, but I don't know that there's, I don't know if the mindset was that, or is that?
Well, because if you look at the state regulations and stuff, regional districts are supposed to be set up, just what you just said. District is supposed to take charge and control and own all of the things that go with it.
Right.
So they can do that. But when this district got to the point of agreeing to go full K, uh, whatever, K to twelve, whatever. The towns decided, no, we wanna keep our own buildings, we wanna keep our own stuff in each town.
I agree. Right.
They went the other way.
I don't, I don't know. So regional, regional for stuff like EMS and that kinda stuff, it, it makes sense and it works. For the school, if the school institute its own policy. Okay, uh, we have to live with it. Now, we have, we have the conversation with the people who make the judgment on the money. You know, you guys, you folks are the ones that want this. No, us folks are the ones that want this. I mean, this, this is what we have to live with. I don't, I don't know how to address it, I really don't.
Well, I think there's, uh, there's always, I, I mean, I, I would say that. We should be trying to push any advice or any, not advice, but any recommendations to, um. To the superintendent as a finance committee. I'm not against that to say, hey, you know, we were talking and here's a few ideas we thought of. You know, if they don't work, we get it, but, um, we're just trying to be as supportive and helpful and get everything we can within saying, right? And I, I can almost guarantee that he would be receptive to that sort of thing, because he seems like the kinda person who was like. I'll take any help I can get. What do you got? Um, and he seems like the type of person who is willing to work to the, and, and I'm sure if you. Email them and said, hey, can I have a conversation for ten minutes and you talk to them about that?
Yeah.
And said, you know, have you worked on this? And, and, you know, how can I help? What, is there anything I can do to push some people in the right direction? He'd probably receptive to it as well. Um, I don't know on the, on the limitations of how we as finance chair, uh, finance members are supposed to go like.
Doing it as a citizen, we, we haven't been no like that, we've done.
Yeah, but.
I mean, our, our responsibilities are weighed up by the charter. I mean, I don't know, we can go ahead and start mentioning things.
No, but you can give recommendations to anyone you want. Is, if, if they wanna listen, I mean, then he can tell you to go shove it, but, um.
Okay.
If he's willing to listen, then that's all, that's, you know, it's the best. Yeah, right?
I, I hope that we don't. The select will, look at having one override versus splitting it up if possible. Because it's all in one, for one, you know.
All in one overall, right?
Yes. And we lose that.
And I think that causes more divisiveness personally, the one it's separated.
Yeah, well, if you have, I'm not doing.
But we had to do it that one time, and we did it for the town services, because that was the only one we knew we could get it through.
Right, if you have one override, right, then that has to go to the budget process and it's gonna get split up. And if the school says we gotta have this much and that budget gets voted, the money's gotta go to that, so.
No, but we, we, we approve one budget now.
I understand, but that's what I'm saying is if, 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 if it's voted at town meeting that the school budget is X amount.
It's gone.
It's fine.
See?
We're committed to it.
Which is, which is tempting.
Right.
Well, it has to go to the polls.
Yeah.
That's the only thing that.
Oh, with the override, right.
This year, this year being slightly different, you still do have to remember that the school is roughly sixty percent of our budget, which is probably the average within all towns in the state. And if not on the lower-ish side.
Right.
Um, so we're not outside of the norm.
No.
And we do have one of the lowest residential tax rates in the state as well.
But we're evaluating higher than the average.
We're valuing.
We're that, yes, we have a lower tax rate, but we, you make it up another way. We're not, we're not. This isn't as cheap as you're making it out to be. Let's, it's, whatever, we're a full evaluation. They just spent a lot of time doing it, catching up. But yes, we're low, but they still didn't, they didn't, the other thing, they still got all their money.
I think what he's trying to say is, tax rate is nice, but when you get your bill.
Yeah.
Tax rate means nothing.
Yeah.
It's the money that's in your pocket.
Tax rate is, the way that bills is now that it was. Well, I, I don't care what your tax rate was, good, I'm glad it's low, but maybe it was higher last year.
So would you rather have a higher tax rate and a lower valuation on your home? You're still gonna make this, it's, the bill's gonna be the bill, right?
Him saying that we have the lowest tax rate in the state of Massachusetts.
Is the fact is you're paying more in your taxes and. There was a potential, like the way we have done, that the budget was asked for the departments, that we're going to lose services. And that's never a good thing.
Yeah.
I mean, there's nothing worse than knowing, oh, great, I can't do this and I can't do this, cause I gotta pay my taxes. And, oh, goodie, they closed that and they did this and they don't have this and, and that's just the way it is. I get it.
People sell and move away.
It's ours incentives, I understand that.
I mean, we do have to recognize that we have just gone through two years of severe inflationary time periods, so. The cost of everything has gone up and.
And your income has gone down because we're freezing.
Inflation has gone up, which brings your, your, uh, income down, and that's not changing. That's gonna, that's not gonna change like, like we were expecting it to. The, the Fed is not gonna be reducing rates like they were, it's gonna be slower. Um, tariffs are going to come in, it's gonna increase, so everybody's gonna feel this. And it's gonna be a pain for a couple of years anyway.
But, but I don't think it's necessarily the right way. You said it just a minute ago. You've lived here in this town for X amount of years, you've paid your taxes and everything else, you've done the best you can. If you have to move out of the town that you. Doug your things and to pay your taxes or pay for overrides, i- in my opinion.
Yeah.
And I'll get a thousand people at the town meeting to say the same, it's wrong.
Yeah.
It's wrong. And I don't know how we get through it, but we shouldn't force the. Members of this community that have been supportive when they had kids, when they did all that stuff and they're paying. Now they wanna fix their income and they get guilty. It's not right.
Sorry, and you're right, it's, you're correct, it's not right, but, but.
It's wrong.
But we can't do anything.
No, he did.
No, no, he was saying people who aren't. No, no, he was saying people who aren't getting the services that they want, because their, the services are being removed, they're just gonna leave town because they want.
If, if you can't afford your taxes, remember what I said, we, I have two choices. If I wanna fix income, I can either move. Deployed to work your, do whatever, donate your time to, that's.
It's too little, any of the, any of the rebates that we get, they're, you know, they're a hundred bucks a year, four hundred dollars a year. Well, it's not, I'm not just feeling that, it is something, but it's not enough to make an impact, so I.
I guess that's a statement, I just think that people that have been in town for years and years and years. Done everything they could, now that they're in, they're there, golden years, and, and they're on a fixed income, trying to survive. Now we're gonna say, ooh, here you go, a- and, and the only possibility out of this. Is moving.
Right, so, I, I'm not just speaking any of that. But I'm just saying, all I'm saying is that that's not solvable here. It's really only solvable at the state level, we gotta change how they.
And that's not happening.
Well, when enough towns get enough of people upset, you know, they go to the dollar box. I don't know.
Okay, now, um, so it's, this was a great discussion, I think it initially spurred off a question that I asked about timelines. Um, I don't know where, I don't know if we answered that question or not. Any thoughts on? And, and I, I don't know, a- any thoughts on the budget timeline?
I think we gotta get.
The one in January, yeah.
We gotta get that there for Washington, so.
We can do other stuff and add that into it, right, I suppose.
I would say.
About that, when he asked the question, do you want to wait until that's ready?
Yeah.
Wait, we go through the other stuff.
Tommy, my concern is, is, is the sixty percent of our budget is so big that I'm gonna have to change. So, and just to, you know, to save your time and also save, uh, town staff time, it's already done a lot of work preparing their budgets. I, I wanna make sure that. Like last year, try to, you know, modernize this budget process a little bit and, and come to you with a presentation and. Allow for a thoughtful discussion, um, with all the departments.
No, no, I was gonna say, I guess I personally would like to see like high level kind of where we are with. The highest limit for education, you know, the kind of comfortable, I don't wanna say comfortable, where we discussed tonight with education. To get a sense as to where we are, like.
You just asked. Well, so, oh, so. We're all here tonight, what, hundred and twenty-seven million was, um. And actually, I haven't had that, exactly, I would do have that document on you.
What's a hundred and twenty-seven?
Hundred and twenty-seven million was what? Oh, so you're talking about the one budget, and I'm thinking hundred and twenty-seven million?
No.
That's the mean.
That's the four point five five, you know.
No, from a hundred and twenty-two to a hundred and twenty-seven.
And our shares how much?
So.
He's saying fourteen percent.
So, yeah, and conservatively about fourteen percent, but of course, as you mentioned, it could change, but it's on average over the past.
It seems like a very conservative estimate.
Yeah, you probably right, yeah, so, since FY seventeen has been, the a- average has been twelve twenty percent. So with, what they just presented, it goes to seventeen point, uh, eight-five-four million, uh, and as I mentioned. That is, um, on, on the model, it's coming around and says it's a two million dollar projected deficit now. I think I even had a thought that night when I saw this number is, you know, if it's that bad, why aren't they asking for? And this is a crazy number, why aren't they asking, I think I said this to Cheryl, why aren't you asking for a hundred and fifteen million?
Right.
But I don't know what it takes to run a school, right, so I don't know.
Still they ask for the big.
Right. Um. But, and, uh, I'll leave, but, um, her question about high level, I think. If you wanna tell me what you think the percentage. We should plan for, I can pop it in there.
We should be planning for, it's a two point five million dollar deficit, that's.
But that's act, that's act a four point, four point.
I added five hundred grand.
Yeah.
Your increase to the school that you put in, what percent?
Um, it's about eight, yeah, based off of that number that they gave us, yeah.
I think maybe it would ten. I don't think they're coming back with an eight.
Also, but remember, we've been talking about this, I, I presented you guys a fifteen couple of months ago, right?
We had to say it on eleven a couple of months ago.
I've been up and down depending on, you know, where things maybe are going, but, um, but even still, you know. Fifty million is, is still, it's probably more so the actual deficit is two point five million.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, just from my experiences, what I would look at is a budget that says this is where, this is our best estimate. Of what the, um, my names would be and the estimates, and then give a risk assessment. What's the risk of that coming down and going up? The risk of coming down is probably zero, but going up, there might be a five percent risk that the overall budget would go up. And then there would be, so, if that would be, uh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna give you more work to do.
But let me just say two point five million dollar deficit. What percent do that deficit is?
Sixty percent.
You put sixty percent of the budget, is this, it's sixty, you know, you gotta just.
Oh, no, but the, the school itself is, is, uh, is one point eight million dollar increase, yeah, so.
But again, it doesn't make a difference, the thing is, you gotta, we gotta stop saying those things, if we're gonna try to do it this way, you gotta do. Well, I don't know that this is the case, but the thing is, is we brought in our three school committee members and. I mean, guys, they're fuzzy, but they're that concerned with our financial goals.
So if it's two point five million dollar deficit, what would we, you know, write or guess the? No, no, no.
No, it's too close, we did that last time.
What was your, what's your long-term goal, do you want, do you wanna do what we did in twenty-four? It solves a year?
Can you, can you, is there a way? Do the shooting bottle in the, in. Uh, is that still possible?
So, that is why we are here tonight, can we? What do you support?
So, so, so.
Cause I, I, that's not my decision, right, because ultimately, this has your names on this budget. Um, this goes to town meeting, um, and this goes to the ballot, so. At the end of the day, they're not gonna ask Austin, what do you think about this budget, they're gonna say, finance committee, what do you recommend, so I forward what you recommend, so what do you recommend? Well, so, and I, this, I hope that we can have a good discussion, cause this is really gonna help me, I, I will do the work, but I, I need your backs. Um.
Well, ultimately, the selectmen are gonna present a budget and we're gonna say yay to make.
Right. So, recommend.
I don't think, I might, the last time we presented a budget was that we were gonna ask for more money than we needed. It was gonna last us two or three years.
Correct.
I don't think we can do that this time, if we try to ask for a lot more, we're gonna get shut down.
You're gonna be fair here, we didn't ask for that much more money, our excess levy capacity was four hundred thousand dollars. Our minimum local contribution for the school went up a million dollars, right? I don't know how informed it is when our in, our minimum local contribution alone is average more than what we left in excess levy capacity, right, so. That's, obviously, that's a chance, so, we can do a lot of projecting out, right, um, which I do have for you, I mean.
The perception is we went toward.
So we don't wanna say to them again, we're gonna be able to do this, so.
No, so, so, okay, hold on, everyone.
Which is why, we also included this model in the town meeting board, and I did it for a reason.
Right.
Um, because I want people to see.
So, the conversation last Thursday was around getting a five-year plan and what that would cost. That's what we need in order to bring a suggested override to the town. We need the school to say, what is the five-year plan and what is it going to cost us, how much of that share is going to be low ends, right? And then we need to take what the services are expected and the increases around the services. And that will be our five-year. Uh, override.
But they don't have their five-year plan in time before.
Uh, well, Jim made it sound like they had, because Anthony and Peter asked about it, and he said that, that they were working on it, maybe we'd probably be able to have some.
There is no way in hell, we're gonna, cause that's gonna be like a, we're gonna tell you like a ten million dollar number over five years.
I'm gonna say, if you take a five-year period, we're, we're double that four billion.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, we're. Cost that in, in three months or four months.
You can't have that plan out there, it's gonna go.
But I don't think we can pass. Oh, right, period, never mind, right. Two, three, four, five million, that's, I wanna give Austin direct, I, my Darren would like to give Austin direction, but. Until we know the numbers, until we go, I think. If, if the selectmen think that it's a, a good thing to float an override out there again. Then, then that's good, I think it's gonna be really, really, really tough. The, a million dollars, because the perception in town, this past year. Around election time was, we went to two million dollars in ten months, and it was supposed to last two or three years.
So, wha- what's the possibility?
But, sorry, how can we change that perception?
It's, it's gone, you saw how the election went down, and then they, it went, it. CPA ever did, it, it was a whole.
Is the two point five or whatever we put in did not last two to three years.
Right.
So what did it last?
A month.
Okay, so maybe it's not ten, maybe it's.
Well, it covered the year, and it covered, yeah.
Well, it, it covered the year, but barely.
Yeah, because we had some attrition and through, and we didn't replace them and stuff like that.
The perception is outdated, it was ten months, you can't bring, we can't reel that one in.
There's nothing we can do about it, other than educating in some way, shape or form that, that. It was the minimum local contribution, which means that the town is more affluent. And therefore had to pay more, that's, that's the bottom line, this town is more affluent than I think a lot of, and that's the trouble is that we have people who are on a fixed income. And then we had the other half of those people who were affluent, and there's nothing we can do. To make the affluent people pay more than.
But wasn't that, we knew that at the time that we put through the override last, last time. We knew that our minimum local contribution was going up.
No, we didn't, cause we weren't in whole harness at that point, and the inflation rate, the inflation factor wasn't.
Right.
Whole harness something.
Whole harness is because the kids.
The district, the whole losses.
And I get that, so that's, but that's. Again, we're not gonna ever know why that happens, that this stuff happens, but we also. We all wanna know here, cause we go and do the research, we don't put it out there. W- we don't have meetings to explain it, yes, you guys select more meetings, but we almost have to ha- start having meetings. At this point to say, guys, these are the problems, this is what it is.
And it wasn't just one thing that did us in, it was just.
You gonna stand up and do it?
But the fact is, but the fact is that. But we have, we have to put it out there, we don't, we don't put it out.
You wanna just simply inform as, as a committee, we can inform the public, I, I mean. Are we gonna get shot down for informing them of what happened, there's, it's not our fault, there's nothing.
That's an emotional question, because what you're saying is you're putting out information that's gonna kill them, this is bad news. And you, and you don't think that they're gonna sit back and say, well, I'm not concerned with this anymore.
No, but I think also, and I've said this in our board meetings, is we're. I think we owe it to our community to educate, to provide information as to what it costs. For the services that we have currently, and what it's, what it would cost to maintain those services. And if we're not gonna pay for those services, then this is what it's gonna be. I think Rutland has, has a very high expectation for high level of services. And we've been fortunate that over the years, we paid for them, but not to the. Level that a lot of other surrounding communities that have the same high level of services pay. So, you, we can decimate the schools, the schools have been decimated just as the towns have been decimated. What you said, cause Bay Pass funding formula is different, we pay, we pay more per child for Bay Pass. Bay Pass gets more per child from the state, it's, that's why they. So I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take Bay Pass out and talk about what you said, right? You see that their MCAS scores are slightly, slightly, ever so slightly better than the state, but not significant. They're not going, they're not trending significantly better, so we continue to decimate the, the district. We continue to decimate the town because we don't wanna fund anything. So I think it's some, but we have, we owe it to our, to our residents, to our community to say, this is what it costs. And if you want a subpar school, if you wanna.
Yeah, I would say to you, if we were to fund completely what the school wants, is there a correlation that MCAS scores will go up?
That's it, are you getting a better look from Brett? No.
That's the thing, there isn't always a correlation of how much you spend to how you get the MCAS. I know, but that, but the thing is, is that you can't, it, I, I mean, now that it's out there, you have to know that there's not necessarily a correlation. Because we also offer some great programs that might not help with our MCAS scores that do help kids find. Not a vocational school, but almost like a quasi vocational school through our system. But witnesses, those kids might not, might, might not help with the MCAS, but who, but they found what they like.
So I'm using MCAS as an example, but then we can cut, we can look at cutting the part, the pathways programs and some of the other programs that, that touch on some of these other. No, we could, but if we're not, but if, if the communities don't fund. And I'm saying it from the school perspective, but I'm also saying it from the town perspective, if we can't fund our s- town stuff, then we have to cut. Our town, and that's what we talk about year after year after year, and my point is, at some point, I think. We owe it to our community to say, this is what it costs for this level of services. And you can pick either we're paying this level of services or we're cutting.
I know somebody asked for a budget with less money in it last year, and I got voted down. Cause that's what I wanted to show the town, that here's what it is if we don't do this. Because you have to slap them in the face, you can't do pretty pictures, you have to hit them with the numbers.
Well, my, my point, one of my points is, we gotta, if you wanna do a presentation and sell this. The CPA, let's use that for an example.
Yeah.
Pretty well, there was a good group of people that were for it, there was. At least some positive things that potentially could come out of it.
Right.
But it affected everybody's wallet, and it went down like the Titanic, so. This has no, this has no benefit other than bids. Which is a good bet, it's the future, but this, this is worse than to, of a sell. Than the CPA, and you guys, the people, not you guys. Spent a lot of time and a lot of effort, and it was like.
No, cause we'd be selling an override for a level funded budget.
Well, and.
That's a tough thing to do. Less services.
What services they gave today.
Well, what I look at is two parts, what you're talking about, is what I'm hearing, number one is. We got a budget for an override for the town, and we have a budget for an override for the school. If we pass the budget for the school, everybody stays employed. If we don't fund the budget for the town, our services go down, that's the. That's the problem, is we're pitying the school against the town, do we use services or do they? Or are we sharing it?
Already losing services, level funded means we're losing services.
Not hearing that there is a consensus that the school and us will bear the pain together. It's either they want it, or we have to, there's a confrontation there, that's what I'm hearing. How do we resolve that issue, they're willing to accept some pain, we're willing to accept some pain. How do we resolve that issue? They're willing to accept some pain, we're willing to accept some pain. How do we resolve that issue?
Are they willing to accept the pain?
I I don't know.
Somehow we need to be able to get that.
Services, but that means that, oh, they get everything they want it. And we're talking about the town, it's basically a ten thousand population with a population of what from Rutland that goes to schools? Sixteen hundred, I don't know, so.
Uh, uh, whoa, but eh, that's a, that's a difficult. So the population of sixteen hundred goes to the schools, but then all of their parents. Are in favor of that, so you're talking about now it's a population of sixteen hundred times three, roughly, right? Right, so it's more of a fifty four hundred, like, it's a five thousand, so it's the majority of the town is involved in the school district.
No, I'm saying, but no, the majority of the town is involved in the town, less than fifty percent is involved in the district. Everybody shares in the town. How do you solve that?
That's an interesting question.
How do you solve that? I I. The benefit of both, by the way, not just one.
Well, could, because we gotta do, if we're gonna sell it, we gotta do a better job than CPA. Cause that went down like hard, and that and that was more that. Possibly, if ever the stars aligned, it would be a benefit to everybody.
And it was, would have been a less money out of pockets of everyone than.
But it's a separate thing, though, so like, I I I could see someone looking at it, and if you're a really informed person, right, and. Like, okay, maybe that's not the majority, maybe not, I don't know, but if you, if you know what you're thinking about here, and you're saying, okay. In two years, maybe, right, hopefully, from that point, we're gonna need another override. But during that time, I'm gonna increase my taxes going towards this thing that's not actually going to affect the town's spend. I'm gonna have to pay that, plus in two years I'm gonna have to pay an override. I don't have the money to do that, so uh, i- if you had any forethought. You could see that that had very little chance.
Oh, yeah.
Of of people accepting that sort, and they just paid an override that last year too.
And the stormwater just.
And the stormwater.
Good point.
We're just asking people to pay more and more and more, and yes, the CPA could have had potentially good outcomes in the future year, right? But people are saying like, okay, that's maybe five to ten years from now, I gotta think about next year. I gotta think about how I'm going to afford my life next year, the next year, the next year. Screw ten years from now, I don't care about ten years, I need to figure out how to survive tomorrow, so I I mean.
A percentage of our population is um serviced by the council on aging, you know?
One.
I know that.
I do know that um, I think it's the census data that's provided by. Sixty plus population is one thousand nine hundred and five, so one thousand nine hundred and five into nine five hundred. Is that forty percent of it?
So then, and how many kids are in are in the school district that we uh. What you said, Bay Pass.
Yeah, I can guess, just one sec.
You're in metrics.
Yeah, um, just about sixty seven hundred.
No, that's.
Uh, yeah, just, I mean, it's it's um, forty five thousand, okay, um, it's sixteen hundred.
So we have the same. Of people who are by the council on aging as are going to the school, and. With a level funded budget, we're going to take cuts to twenty percent of our population.
Affecting twenty percent.
Affecting twenty percent, yeah.
I think that's a hard comparison to make.
It would be a hard comparison to make, cause you're not affected by it, but if you're, if you're responsible for trying to get into. Keeping yourself limber and making sure that you can get your medication.
But I think that you're making a comparison to um, uh uh uh, and I could be wrong, and correct me if I'm wrong, but. The kids are there at the schools eight hours a day, is all of those. Four hundred, thirteen hundred pe- senior citizens at the council on aging eight hours a day, I know, right? And so the services are not exactly.
No, but some of them.
See, but you got ambulance and police and.
Eh, that affects all of nine thousand or.
Let's not forget that those people are the seniors that have. Were and will continue to pay to fund the children for the school. Nobody's funding them, let's not forget their sacrifice that they gave. Over the last forty, fifty years in this town.
I think I mentioned it early.
Yes.
Oh wait, how can you say that the that no one's paying for them when everyone's paying taxes, right?
No, 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 cause the benefit we get is not the same.
Right.
Is the.
But that twenty percent, you said of over sixty, or whatever, that that's not the number that. The council agent is servicing, there won't be, how many?
I said, uh, but I'm saying over sixty, so we figure over sixteen people, I just said council.
Number is, I understand, what I'm saying is a lot of elderly people don't take any of those services or women.
That's still pay their taxes.
As best they can.
Is, right.
Completely.
But again, if you wanna look at numbers purely. You have a budget of seventeen million for sixteen hundred kids, and you have a budget of like forty thousand or hundred thousand. I'd report eighteen hundred seniors or five hundred seniors.
The rest of the town.
The rest of the town.
The rest of the town is the number.
Anything, all I'm saying is, how do we resolve the issue to save the town? We wanna protect our services, we also wanna do good by the students, but we have two different dimensions here we have to look at.
Well, the other part, Harry, is we got sixty percent. And then we get the forty percent, and when you divide those numbers out, you got ten thousand people in Rutland. And you get six thousand at the school, but for sixty thou- for sixty percent of our budget, we got sixty seven hundred people. Forty percent of our budget, the rough numbers, we have the other way, you know, so we're losing.
But this is, but I'm gonna, this is a, this is how taxes work, this and this is across Massachusetts, this is.
Break it down to the numbers, it doesn't matter how tax, eh, it matters how taxes work, but when you look at it. We don't get forty percent for ten thousand people if, and we get. The other way, we get all that sixty percent for sixty seven hundred, and and that's the way taxes work, but it doesn't help.
It doesn't help the people, I I understand your point, I'm not negating your point, but I'm also saying that some of this is. We taxes work and we can't, it's not an allopart menu, like, we can't say I wanna pay for this and I wanna pay for that. I hear we need to figure out a way to to ensure that the services that are provided. For the entirety of town, the ten thousand, that forty percent is not decimated.
So what does that mean? That means we have to come up with a way of convincing the total ten thousand people in town. The voting population.
The schools were held, if the schools were held to two and a half percent, we would still be at, I believe we would still need a, we would still be at a deficit.
Yeah, because their budget's over a hundred and something billion dollars, right?
In full.
Even if they were at zero percent, I'm pretty sure we would need, we would be at this.
Well, if we take a million off that we're looking at, that's our percentage, then we're still left with one point five million deficit, this little town.
No.
Then what? If we have a two and a half million dollar deficit and Austin said if we're looking at sixty percent of it, so which would be roughly a million dollars added to the. Two and a half, if we take the million off, then we're left with one point five, unless I'm not seeing it right.
So, I mean, we do have, there's a revenue challenge there, right, I mean, our overall bottom line um revenue. Uh, even, you know, up two and a half to the max, uh, which is about half a million dollars. Um, conservative undergrowth, uh, and then obviously. Similar to the schools, we can't assume any increase in state aid, so low funding state aid, level funding local receipts. It's only about a one and a half percent increase in revenue, so even. Even with the school that's two and a half, it's still uh, like an eight hundred thousand dollars.
And let's just be clear, that's a result of using one-time funds to fund an operational budget, and we all knew the penalties of doing that. Well, we used more one-time funding last year than we have in prior years.
Well, a couple of years ago, we used.
The town also used one-time funds when they did the over, we used free cash.
One thing I would say that, I appreciate Austin doing, and I know this was a yeoman's job, was creating a five-year budget. You might not like the numbers, but at least you can appreciate where the numbers are going. That it gives you an advance notice of how to prepare, that's what I was hoping to see from the school.
The unfortunate part is, he did a great job at it, but now the schools already have. Found in the opposite direction to what we had budgeted, to what you had planned. So I mean, alright, cause that's a very big unknown, every year. It's always been asked, and it's like, okay, we can put together something, but can you tell us where the schools are gonna go?
The interesting thing for me is, we're, eh, as we stand up in front of the town folks and talent listeners the way it is. Some people start making decisions, I think I'm gonna go someplace else. Where the hell, unless they're going to South Carolina.
Alabama.
Alabama, Louisiana, Texas.
When I said earlier, it's unfortunate, and Harry said it about people that have been here for fifty and sixty years. And now being forced with difficult decisions.
Yeah, and I don't think that, and they don't wanna move, they wanna stay.
But that is part of one, I mean, I hate to say, but we live in one of the, one of probably what, number three most expensive states in the country. So unfortunately, it's a part of where we live.
Right.
And there's very little that we as a town of Rutland can do about.
I don't know, you're right, I I have relatives who have decided, I'm not staying here anymore, and they're going south. And, you know, they sold their house up here for four hundred, four hundred fifty thousand dollars five years ago. And bought a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar bigger house in South Carolina, and now. Their houses are going up, I'm complaining, you know, taxes, where are people gonna go, I mean, it's just, it's the way.
So, so I make, Austin, what were you looking for for a number?
It was, it was timeline, um, but also, I, there was a little bit of a discussion. Um, I think this would be helpful also as we're talking, talking with the board, well, you're here. Preparing the warrant, instead of, I think historically, we would separate out all the spending articles, which seems to be one spending article.
Was that what you meant about, what are you getting, just a?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't have any feelings one way or the other.
I I was thinking override, not spending articles.
Well, makes it challenging, um, and I think this is what happened with Paxton, right, is, I think they tried to do override on the town article. Didn't do it on the school, obviously, it did pass.
Right, and then there was a problem.
Yeah.
We had to do different iteration.
I don't know how we. But that, we don't have to discuss that tonight.
That's different, cause we've had to do that in the past. When we put one through just for municipal services.
I guess, let me ask the finance committee, does anyone have um, a desire to talk about the budget before we have the school's input? So basically, during the months of January, February, does anyone want to. Move the timeline up to those months to talk about where we're at with the budget, I mean, I think we have a general idea of where we're at. Um, it's, it's obviously grim, um, does anyone want to meet prior to getting the school's budget?
I think if we saw. I was gonna say, if we saw it, we could look at it beforehand, then maybe have a meeting, I don't know.
Yeah, I wouldn't have any objection to.
Alright, so why don't we do this, why, um, Austin, can you send that out to uh, where we're at with the generalized budget now? Um, to the finance committee, everyone take some time to look at it, give feedback in the next two weeks, not feedback on the budget.
No, so I, my reviews of departments was finished today, I. I still wanna meet with um, the finance team and and we just just finished that at twelve thirty seven.
Okay, so when you're done, or when you get a a a, when you get a draft budget, finalized draft budget. Send it out, everyone take some time to review it, and then. Like a week after we get it, maybe say, you know, I do wanna meet in sometime in January, February, I, you know, and we'll, we'll take feedback then and we'll.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'm.
When does the governor's budget come out?
Uh, usually it's, it's right around the annual meeting.
So it's the end of January.
Yeah, and her state of the state is January sixteenth.
So really, you gotta wait till the governor's budget comes out, because otherwise, you're just guessing at way too many things. And and it's not you, it's everybody, and I get it, but, but you gotta have a governor's budget, so at least you know kind of where you are. It's still a guess, but at least it's.
Close to guess?
I'm saying that after he sends a draft budget out, we can review and and we can get input as to when we would like to meet. Is that, does, does anyone have an issue with that, or does anyone still wanna meet quicker? I think Austin wants to wait, I'm guessing.
Yeah, just cause I, you know, I I really wanna make this as efficient as possible for all of you too.
So when we wait, I I'll check back in with Austin, eh, if if eh, if eh, too much time, like if, like around January twentieth, it sounds like we have. Something around an idea, um, and then I'll check back on the timeline on January twentieth-ish. And then I'll send out a timeline of when we should receive it.
Yeah, fifteenth, twentieth?
Yeah, I mean, don't get me wrong, I I wanna be done now. And I know you do too, so I I don't feel very great asking essentially for a delay in this process, but.
Well, uh, to be, to be fair to you, though, the school, you're you're not necessarily the one that's going, it's really the school is is, we're waiting on the majority of the budget because. And that's also because of the state, so like.
One thing that also kinda came up today with finance teams, we were talking about essentially this this discussion tonight is um. Depending on some of the political decisions that may or may not happen, is there an appetite? Um, I mean, I obviously it's like what I haven't discussed this yet either, but could possibly delay the town meeting. Um, also a little bit later, um, more so strategically and and. Uh, I'm of the mindset that if you're asking for, for an override, it's better to have that, need the ballot question is the most important component. Right, so, I, as you know, the way that we structure our town meetings, town meeting happens before the ballot. Um, in my opinion, if you're gonna ask for an override, you should have that ballot authorization first. Um, so you get order approval to actually increase the levy and you go to a town meeting and yeah, appropriate.
For the simple reason that most people, you've been at this, that you've been at our meetings, you've been at the slideboard meetings, like. We have to, we got that captive audience to see the information, and it's, that's the thing. You get that captive audience to sell it, so that when they go and vote.
Sure, I mean, but but that's not to say that you still can't do the, I mean, you're gonna have to do outreach anyways for both. You're gonna have to get them to show up to to the ballot and to town.
Yes, but the thing is, you've got all those people that come to town meeting, that you've got them as a captive audience. That they listen and see and hear what will, it will do, and then they go and vote. Versus if you have them go and vote, they don't see what it's gonna do and they go, I don't want any more taxes, and then we're doing another one.
You lost. Yeah, well, so then the town, I mean, you're in a really tough position, then you're doing a Paxton dust, and you're having three more town meetings after a field ballot vote, right, so. Really, the only thing significantly that matters, technically, town meeting doesn't do the, this levy authorization, it's the ballot, right? So, um, it's also, again, you know, trying to be mindful of.
But town meeting is two hundred some people to get to see it, and unfortunately, I know you don't wanna hear this, but it's. Different iterations of the budget so that they can see, if the road goes through, it's this, if it doesn't, this is where it is, if it's not, it's this. And you have to put it out in black and white.
Beforehand too for in in events of a ballot vote. I mean, that's kinda, that's kinda the work that would be done here. Right?
I think the point is that there's just the more audiences you can talk to, the better, I think.
So when we're doing the. Informational stuff over here. I do know that we're, they're the same people. Were at those events um two or three at a time. So I, to that point, you may have had. A thousand people in those meetings, but you only really saw. You know, two hundred, three hundred, cause people are coming back.
True, though, that I with the one that I went to, I don't remember seeing a single face there that I recognized as being at a town meeting. So I think, I think to that point, there's people that went to those informational meetings that don't go to town meetings, so you are talking to different audience.
I think the override was successful because of the amount of outreach, I don't think it's because of who showed up. You guys did an extensive amount of outreach.
Well, I think that's they that certainly helped, but I think the other thing helps too.
Yeah, I mean, I respectfully disagree, um but of course, it's it's the will of.
Well, sorry, I think what we're saying is you better consider the town meeting kind of outreach. That's what it is, it's communication.
Town meeting, town meeting appropriate, it's ballot increases.
Let me tell you what's in the budget. That's communication.
Yeah. Yeah, you're un- un- unfortunately, to be honest, I I think. I think we haven't done a good job of it, people that need to be there at town meeting and the ballot. Hasn't, it's that outreach hasn't happened beforehand, to be honest, I think most people going to town meeting, especially for a question like that. And for some other questions that we've just been having. Already had their mind.
Yeah.
Um, especially when there's outreach next. You might, but are you gonna change a sign significant percentage that? You know, I I don't think it was close, the override, it was it passed overwhelmingly. And I give a lot of credit to everyone in this room, for everything that happened well for.
Isn't it a bylaw that would understand?
Bylaw, unless otherwise, um. It's a bylaw in, well, no, it's general.
Right, it's a loophole that you can move it.
Yeah, I mean, but general, but general law doesn't state when you can. The only thing about general is it has to happen. Has to happen before June thirty.
When we, when we.
That you're going to change, how many people are up on the sledboard this year? Only one, okay, so you're not gonna change much on the sledboard, but that was the reason why Eddie changed it. Because you would have a year where a couple would change. And then it was when we would go, this is before we had a town administrator. So then it would be, well, why was this place? And and the question would be, well, I don't know, I wasn't involved in those meetings. And 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 seriously, that was the reason why Eddie stood up and made the change. And.
I, but I, and I argued this during our budget or bylaw review, now we have town administrator. And I would push back a little bit and say, if you're running for sledboard, then hopefully you're involved in, you're paying attention to the meetings to understand.
You 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 should, I really, you should be.
But but my point during the bylaw review was now we have a town administrator. That is positioned that dies. That has that continuity. So a a a year of two board members changing. Is a lot impactful than a year of.
I think personally, we should. Not a decision that needs to happen.
Yeah, just move it this year.
I think it's also dependent on how much time we have to have those informational meetings for when we have the finalized budget and when we're trying to.
The election, can't we? I know in the past, it was always we couldn't move the election because they closed the schools, and now that that doesn't happen, we could move the the election in our town. That was always the argument I used to hear all the time, cause we have asked in the past.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's. But.
I think it's less easy to move. To move the elections, there's a lot more expense to go to the big election, as far as the printing of the ballots and the.
Yeah, but if you were to tell them now, removing it, it's, there's not the expense.
No, 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 but I think that in the past, when it's been asked, it's been. Pushing.
Well, it was always cause they closed the schools, and that used to be the big thing, well, every school gets closed and every town in the district votes and we don't.
So. January twentieth, I'm gonna check in with Austin on where the budget's at, give everyone a timeline of when we'll receive a draft budget. I'm gonna set, have Austin send that out, um hopefully soon after that, right, it may not be on January twentieth, but a- around that time period. And then everyone's gonna give me feedback as to whether they want to wait to meet after the school gives their input, or if we want to meet before that, at that point.
Do we have a consensus? Little vote about his second question?
What was the second question?
Whether we move the.
Uh we didn't make that decision.
Well, he does, he wants to get going on it.
Yeah, no, it's it was.
That wouldn't be our decision anyway.
No, but if if we say no, he's gonna go no, maybe.
And you know, I guess to be fair to the board, I hadn't obviously had a chance to discuss this fully then, I said, but. It was just as we're talking about timelines for everything and um. Depending on where the schools are. How late they go to your, I think to every point, you know, the later these schools are, the later our budget processes. Less amount of time we have to do so.
Everybody do your thing.
We have two minutes, right?
Oh, we have two minutes? You wanna do minutes?
No, not really.
Yes, we're actually because Ben and and um. And they got a lasting problem, but all the minutes to be up posting.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. We're concerned at.
Make a motion and read.